Good evening. The November 12th, 2015 Longview City Council meeting will not be called to order. Tonight, our prayer and pledge will be led by Dr. Lamar F. Jones, Executive Director of the Longview Clergy Coalition. Please stand.
Let us bow. Most gracious is the eternal Father. We thank you for this day. We thank you for another opportunity together, together. We ask and pray now that you will bless our mayor, that you will bless our city council, bless all the employees, that they, the things that they do tonight will be pleasing in your sight, that it will bring us closer together as we develop one Longview. We thank you now, God. This we ask in Jesus' name. We say, "Thank God," and amen.
Amen.
All together, I pledge-
Allegiance to the flag-
-of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Dr. Jones. Tonight, our employee recognition will be into the traffic division. Today, we are recognizing the seven employees of the City of Longview Traffic Division. The employees recently replaced a damaged traffic signal system, including cabinets and components at South Street and High Street, in only four hours. This system had been severely damaged due to a wreck involving an 18-wheeler. Due to the city's investment in the employees and their training, the traffic division employees were capable of replacing the signal systems without contractual help, as required in the past, and they did so in very fast time. In addition, through the support of the city council and the funding of our annual budget, the city traffic systems network has been upgraded significantly and rivals other cities in its current state. Nearly 90 percent of the traffic network is interconnected with modern-day signal and network components. Also, all the major corridors have been timed for better traffic progression. Our traffic employees include: Traffic Engineer, Stephen Hoth. Please step forward. Thank you, sir. He's a professional engineer with 40 years of experience. Traffic Signal Supervisor, Keith Covington. He's a Level III Certified Technician. Signal Technicians, Gregory Leach, Steve Fleming, and Arima Scott, Level I Certified Technician, preparing for Level II. Signs and Marketing Technician, Thomas Walker, Level I Certified Technician, and Maintenance Worker, Brandon Warren, preparing for a Level I exam. Yes, y'all, please come on over here. We'll get a picture first, and then I want to just say a few words. I just want to say, I know that we often take for granted a lot of things that take place in our city, and this is obviously one of them. We don't recognize that those traffic signals don't just program themselves. They don't just turn on and off like they're supposed to by some magic. These men are the ones who are responsible for that, and I can tell you, I know sometimes we get frustrated and you go, "Why am I sitting at a red light?" But you know what? There's a lot of science involved behind this mechanism here. And so, we appreciate your dedication, all the things that you do for Longview. And I know, it doesn't seem like much, but four hours is a quick turnaround to replace a traffic signal in an intersection like that, where we normally have to shut a street down and divert traffic for, you know, sometimes more than a day. So, congratulations to you all. Thank you for your service to the city, and we appreciate every single one of the air that you can do every day. Thank you very much. Appreciate y'all so much.
And Mayor, if you'll allow me to make a comment. I live in far west Longview, and it is, it is a joy to drive down Highway 80 from Silver Falls to downtown. I don't have to stop at all. You guys are good.
That's because you're running the red lights. If you turn red, you're supposed to stop.
Thank you, guys. My mayor, if you'd like to make one other comment.
Mr. Moore said, "We've got really a high-tech system here. These cameras that you see mounted on the post up near the lights, they're not red-light cameras. Then the city's not watching to see who runs. Those are cameras that actually activate the lights. So if you come up to an intersection and there's nobody coming on your right or left, you should have a green light going through that." I mean, this is a high-tech system. It works very well. And again, as Mr. Moore said, we have excellent traffic control. Thank you.
Thank you all. Okay. I know this is on here, I just don't know where it is.
Citizen Comment.
No, this conference planning award. Okay, I'm gonna go to the agenda. Time for citizen comment. I have no speaker cards, which is amazing, with everyone sitting in this audience tonight. Would anyone like to speak that hasn't filled out a card? Excellent. Okay. Okay. Wow, y'all quit sweating. We didn't know what we'd done wrong to have all you all here tonight. We appreciate you being here. Thank you so much. Okay, election items. It's time for a canvas, the November 3rd, 2015 Special Election, Hensley Park Property Proposition Canvas. Ms. Ballinger.
Good evening, Dr. Mack, Council, Mr. Willard. On November the 3rd, 2015, the City of Longview had one proposition on the ballot. Proposition number one was for or against removing the park designation from Hensley Park, thus authorizing the sale of said land or its use for other purposes. Early voting totals were for, 1,226; against, 744. Early voting total was 1,970. Election Day totals, for, 1,480; against, 812. Total votes for Election Day was 2,292. Grand total of votes, for, 2,706; against, 1,556. For total votes, a 4,262. Proposition one passed by 63.49 percent. The total number of Longview voters were 42,034. Total percentage of voters voting in Longview were 10.14 percent. And we're asking for a resolution to approve.
Thank you, Ms. Shelley. We're gonna consider a resolution approved on November 3rd, 2015 Special Election, Hensley Park Property Proposition Canvas.
Move for approval?
Take second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries.
One quick comment here, and I don't, I'm sure I can make this afterwards, according to Mr. Finley. I want to say thank you for the positive vote we had on the election, and I can assure you that the people on this city council and city staff will do the best to give you the park that you, the new park that you deserve in North Longview. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Shelley. Okay, presentation items. I have a presentation of the Texas Chapter American Planning Association Comprehensive Planning Award. The Texas Chapter of the American Planning Association has awarded the City of Longview with the 2015 Comprehensive Planning Award for the Longview Comprehensive Plan. The American Planning Association continuously recognizes planning excellences in municipalities throughout the state. This award recognizes individuals, organizations, and communities for outstanding contributions to planning in Texas. This award is only given to two projects per year. The city's comprehensive plan effort was led by Committee Chairman Keith Honey and Council Liaison Richard Manley. Comprehensive plan is a long-range plan that is intended to be used by city staff, city council. Stand right here, Keith. No, no. A little over the left, right here. I want you right in front of me, because I don't want the camera on here. Yeah, I want there. So, along with citizens, as a flexible guide for the community's physical development for 15 to 20 years, the City of Longview has embarked on an important journey in the creation of the comprehensive plan. Thank you to all the committee members, staff, and citizens who were involved. First off, I want to say a real heartfelt thanks to not only this committee, but all the citizens of Longview that participated in the online surveys, the community meetings that were, that were held at different locations. All of the input goes into making a plan, and then you all put those pieces together, and you constructed a plan that is obviously great for Longview, as indicated by this Comprehensive Planning Award given to the, to the, to the City of Longview for 2015. I'm gonna present this to you, Keith, since you're the chairman. Thank you. And I just want to, I just want to tell you that this is a special, special award, and it's a special plan, because it does outline where we need, it's a roadmap for what we need to be doing and where we need to be focusing over the next 15 to 20 years. And I've said it a lot of times, this is a great plan, as long as it's put into effect. It's a worthless document if we don't implement this plan, and this council is committed to implementing this plan, and I think you've seen those efforts already ongoing, you'll continue to see them. Because, and I say, it's, and I think we're all used to this, because I know when I was on the council, we had these same types of documents, you know, we say 15 to 20 years. You know what? I say fantastic, but let's see what we can do in the next five years, okay? Because 20 years, I'm not gonna be here. And I want to be here when these things come to fruition. So, my goal, and this council's goal, is to say, "What can we do to make this happen in the next five years?" So that's the kind of timeframe we're putting on it, because we feel the need for the community, and we see the importance of this, and we appreciate the way you all have handled this and how you brought it before the city. And I can't see anything but good things coming from this. Keith, please.
Thanks, Andy. Let me just say, there's a lot of people to thank, as Andy mentioned. This, this committee was fantastic. I mean, they just worked hard. It's obviously a labor of love, I think I can say that on behalf of all of us. These people love Longview, and it shows, I think, in the plan that was developed. Staff was great, council was great, the community was fantastic, and so it made, it made my job really very simple. And I think we've got a great plan, and I'm looking forward to implementing it, Andy. So, thanks to you and the council for moving it forward.
We have every commitment to do that, and I want to just say again, Keith is so instrumental in things that he takes on in Longview. He's such a, such a workhorse and a force in all that he does, and we appreciate your leadership. I wish Richard was here, Richard Manley was the council liaison. He helped this project go along as well through council direction, and everyone deserves credit. This was a big committee. You all are part of that committee, and I appreciate every single one of you all. And when you all see people out in the community that work in this committee, just tell them thank you. They spend a lot of time, a lot of energy, a lot of effort away from their families to do something that's really, really gonna be great for Longview. So, thank you, hats off. Appreciate you all very much. (applause) Okay. We're going to now have a presentation of a residential solid waste collection study conducted to evaluate the city's current garbage recycling and bulked item collection system. Mr. Pugsley.
Well, let me, let me introduce him real quick. Mayor, Council, Mr. Willard, as you recall, during our budget process, we discussed the need for some discussion about our sanitation collection system. And what, tonight, we have Frank Pugsley from CPNY and Park Hill Smith and Cooper, and what he would like to do is, he went through our process, he spent a lot of time out with our vehicles, watching them on the routes, collecting data, so he's put together some information from that study, and he's also put together some recommendations. And then what we'd like to do is staff, we'll come back in December after you've had a chance to hear his presentation, and then we'll bring some other recommendations to you in December, so that you, from that, you'll be able to put together the plan going forward, so.
Thank you, Duane.
Mr. Mayor, Council. As Duane said, I'm Frank Pugsley, and the reason for the two logos. I formerly CPNY, started with Park Hill Smith and Cooper here just a few weeks ago, so, completing the study for y'all. Next one. So, as Duane said, he retained me to conduct the study, the residential solid waste collection system. So, when we put together our scope, we wanted to identify the key issues and objectives, look at the current solid waste collection system, see some observations in the field from the staff and from our own eyes, kind of evaluate the collection efficiency, how well things are going, how efficient things are being collected, kind of look at some service benchmarking, see if the city is kind of in the same ballpark with other cities around the state, and look at the ordinances and policies that govern the collection system and waste here in the city, kind of consider collection vehicle routing, is it efficient? Are the vehicles traveling, you know, a relatively short route to collect the waste they need? And then produce some recommendations out of that study as well. So, the key goal that the city identified for us was that we want to collect between 1,000 and 1,200 customers per route per day. So, for us, that means our key issues in the study were efficiency, ordinances and policies, and routing. Those are the three things that we want to identify that could be holding them back from achieving those goals. So, we wanted to reduce the time required for collection, identify the challenges that the crews face out on the streets every day, help to improve customer compliance, identify those recommended changes, and then on the back end, kind of look at if there are any benefits to a routing study, if we can shorten up that travel time for everyone. In general, just real briefly, the current solid waste system, you have about 25,000 current customers. Most of those are residential, there's less than 1,000 commercial customers that are collected by the residential crews, and we really focused on the garbage collection, the waste. The city staff has divided it up into 28 routes across the city, four days a week, so that gives us seven routes a day, and they are currently collecting that waste with seven trucks on those routes, plus one help truck to help out when things get a little heavy, to improve those guys' time so they're not out late into the night. And that gives us about 894 households per route, so moving towards that 1,000. Recycling's broken up into 16 routes, because we're not collecting every house every day for recycling. People don't set out there recycling every day, so there's four trucks, four routes per day. Bulky waste, the city does currently have a really generous bulky waste collection system. Residents are allowed to place that out, as you know, weekly. There is a limit in the regulations from the city of four cubic yards. In observations, we see that getting exceeded pretty regularly. Just for a visual, four cubic yards is about where you could fit in the back of a standard pickup truck, filling it up to about the roof line. So, that's a pretty considerable quantity of waste. And like I said, frequently, the guys are out there collecting more than four cubic yards at a certain stop. One of the good things we did notice, I wanted to point this out, the recycling participation. For a relatively new program, you've got over 52 percent of people who are placing their cans out on the street, week, on a weekly basis for collection of recyclables. That's really strong for, you know, a very young, young program. And just from industry knowledge and standards, we kind of can estimate that 52 percent, about 15 to 25 percent additional people are probably participating not on a weekly basis. So, you've got up to 75, 75 percent of residents are actually participating in recycling, which is a really strong number. That's really great, especially, like I said, for a young program. And then the, the customer garbage placement, these are the items that we really wanted to kind of focus on when we were out following the guys on the truck, to look at, see what kind of issues they're facing. The, the kind of black half over there, we got at least 50 percent, maybe more, who are, have no issues with their set-out, no issues with their garbage placement. The green wedge, about 17 or 18 percent have issues with container set-out. And what I'm talking about here is, you have the tipper carts, those need some space to be able to be picked up by the truck. They're either too close to an obstruction, like another can, a parked car, a mailbox, maybe they're under a tree or a power line where the guys can't safely actually lift the cart. Bagged waste, that yellow wedge is another 17 or 18 percent. People are placing either just bagged waste out for collection, or there are bags adjacent to the carts. So, that means the operators have to physically stop the truck, get out, pick up those bags, and then place them in the truck manually, instead of just being able to stop for a few seconds, reach out, pick up the can and tip it. And then the, the little blue wedge, about another 16 to 17 percent of the people are using non-city-issued containers, whether that be your standard little galvanized metal can, or something they picked up at Walmart. And the issues we see with those are especially like the galvanized can that doesn't have wheels, the guy's gotta get off the truck, drag the can to the back of the truck, and then lift that physically and dump it in the back. And even if you have, you know, for instance, bought a cart at Walmart that does have wheels, those typically aren't really designed to withstand all that abuse that the truck puts on those containers, so when the guy reaches out and he's clamping onto that thing day after day, week after week, it's, it's gonna break some of those inferior, less, you know, less expensive carts. So, we would encourage people to use the city cart that's actually designed for use with the truck. I wanted to present a few examples of what we saw in the field. Some of these are city photos, some of those are mine. On the left-hand side, you've got two carts, you have your garbage cart and your recycling cart, both of which are filled with garbage. And we also have probably about four cubic yards of bulky waste that's set out here. And in this kind of situation, the guys on the residential collection truck are gonna stop, they're gonna collect both the tipper carts, and then they're gonna get out of the truck, and they're gonna hand-load all this into the back of the truck. And that takes those guys, you know, you know, five or 10 minutes to pick up all this and put it in the truck. And ideally, we'd like to see those kind of things, per the regulations, bundled, less than 50 pounds per bundle, so the guys have a lot easier time putting it in the truck. The typical bulky waste collection that we're thinking about in bulky waste situations is with this, we call it the lightning loader truck. It has that grappling arm on the back. These guys will go around and collect, you know, the larger loads, and this truck's about 30 feet long. That's quite a large quantity of bulky waste that this one particular place has set out, you know, well in excess of the four cubic yards. The guys do a great job, they're not gonna leave the excess over four, they're gonna pick all this up so we don't end up with nuisances or unsightly streets, but this is, you know, what we'd like to, you know, no concrete evidence, but this is what would appear to be maybe a landlord who had a tenant move out, and he pushed everything out to the street. And so, the city collection crew is then subsidizing his private business, you know, with his rental properties around the city. Green waste, we know you have a lot of leaves, a lot of green here in East Texas, that's a great thing. The one on the left, that's a pretty respectable quantity of green waste, lawn clippings and leaves from, from a household, and the guys will stop and collect this manually, and that, that's totally within the limits of the rules. The one on the left, you know, we have a lot more bags sitting out there. And in, in our opinion, you know, when you see something like this, it's hard to believe that all this came from one residence, or that it was just the resident doing this himself. This could potentially be, you know, a lawn and landscape company who is servicing a lot of households, and then when he got his trailer full, he puts it on the side of the street because he knows the city's gonna come clean it up for him. So, again, subsidizing private business through the, the city's residential solid waste collection system. Sorry, it's a little dark, but the one on the left, you can see that the automated side-litter trucks just passed by, it's gonna come back down the street again, but this one household has four containers. So, in that kind of situation, when everyone else gets one, these guys have four, you know, it's not really fair for the other people who are paying their base rate, and then this customer is, you know, he's got three cans of trash and one of recycling. You know, so that, that's the kind of situation that we'd like to alleviate as well. And you might think that placement looks pretty good, there's lots of space in between those, the trash is all in the containers, there's a few bags you can't really see in this picture, but there's some lawn waste there, which is fine. But, you know, we would call this a non, you know, non-compliance, set out, the wheels are facing the street. When the truck comes by to pick that up, if the lid and the wheels are facing the street, sometimes you run into the lid getting kind of jammed in the hopper, it can break it. So ideally, we'd like those cans turned around, facing the street, wheels to the curb, so that the guys can easily reach out with the truck and pick those up. Again, on the right, we, we have one of those things that kind of appears to be a landlord cleanup. It looks like the contents essentially from a one-bedroom apartment here, there's several mattresses, I think there may be a couch in there, and a lot of debris. And this is all just essentially dumped on the curb for the residential guys to stop and pick up. Again, slowing them down, reducing their efficiency, so they can't get to all those, you know, 900 or 1,000 or 1,200 houses in a day. Real briefly, I know that's a lot of, a lot of numbers, I'm sorry, but we had that average of about 900 customers per route, and the estimates, when the, the system was implemented, it's four 10-hour days, we have eight hours on collection route, because they spend about two hours a day going back and forth to the landfill, they usually dump twice. If you, we do the math on there, you know, we're doing about 112 customers an hour. When I went out and followed the trucks on a couple of days, observed, you know, that time and motion data, we're really hitting about 94. So, that's when they need that extra truck. You know, ideally, in the ideal situation, we got seven, they have to have seven plus that one eighth truck. Down on the bottom, we have our goal, somewhere between 1,000 and 1,200. To hit about 1,000, we need about 130 customers an hour, and that brings us from that 41 seconds down to about 21 seconds per customer, and that actually reduces you to six routes per day. So, that takes one truck, it could potentially take one truck off the road, you have another standby, you have another backup in the yard, and if we can push it all the way to the 1,200, you're doing 150 customers an hour, and you're even less than six. You have 5.2 routes, but you gotta call that six. Some of the benchmarking, just to let you know, you basically are, yes, in the ballpark with a lot of the cities around the state, this is just a small sampling. The one kind of thing that stood out to us most is the limitations. Most every other city requires all the waste that they're gonna collect to be contained in the city's provided cart. So, that's the one, that's the one thing I wanted to point out here. Ordinations and policies, as I mentioned, we reviewed the ordinances, the solid waste ordinance and the rules that the division has put forth. There's three things that really stood out to us, that the rules specifically allow, they specifically allow personal containers, doesn't require you to use a city container, and it also allows waste to be placed out in bags rather than a cart. So, the rules specifically allow residents to place their waste in bags and not use a cart whatsoever, should they choose. Routing, just touch on this real briefly. The city initially, when you set up the new system, went with the Waste Management Logistics, which is the same one that Corpus Christi uses, to kind of break the city up in two sectors. And now, it's, as an ongoing basis, the city uses their in-house GIS maps and GIS coordinates of all the customers, so they break up the city based on how many customers enter a route, in kind of logical geographic areas, so they're not having to cross major streets a lot, keep them in certain neighborhoods. But, there are options, maybe to use some third-party routing software, like that Waste Management Logistics, to build a better route for the trucks, where they would have to make less dead-end turns, less what we call hammerhead turns, where they actually have to pull out on a street, back up, and come back in again to go down the street the other way. With those routing programs, you know, they can optimize that travel path, so it shortens it up for those guys. And on to the important stuff, the recommendations, there's basically four, four main topics here. The first two bullets, the waste regulations, it would be, you know, our recommendation that the city require garbage and recyclables to fit in that cart. When it's got waste spilling out to the side, or bags sitting everywhere, like I said, that really slows these guys down, they have to stop the truck, sometimes the driver has to get out. A lot of times, the, the labor on the back will just run around and grab the bags, but that causes them to stop and delay over and over and over, all day long. And to kind of have some enforcement on there, a flexible non-compliance program, nothing, you know, no iron fist, it's, leave a hangtag on the door a few times, make some phone calls to them, possibly send out, you know, a code compliance officer just to visit with them and talk to them about proper placement and how things need to be, need to be handled. The second bullet, review the options of the sanitation, or the, yeah, the options in the sanitation program. Really look forward at these future capital expenditures, we know the trucks don't last forever, we gotta plan for the retirement and addition of new trucks as we move on down the line. In order to help us with having all that waste fit in the carts, have some kind of mechanism to allow customers to obtain an additional cart for a fee, so it's fair and equitable. If you need three carts because you have, you know, six kids at home and you generate a lot of trash, that should be an option that people should be able to have. We've also heard concerns from older people, or people with mobility issues, that that big 95-gallon cart's hard to manage. The manufacturers make smaller carts, that those trucks are fully capable of handing, all, handling, all the way down to like 30 gallons, so those people might be given the opportunity to get a smaller cart that they could then manage a lot easier for them. The bulky waste program we saw from some of those pictures, that, that can be a really significant issue on a weekly basis for these guys. Some of the things, it might look at changing that to either a call-in-only system, if people have bulky waste, they simply call sanitation department, and they'd schedule a time when they can come pick up their waste at their house, or move it to monthly or quarterly, so it's easier to plan and manage when it's a weekly process. That waste is really scattered around the city a lot, but if it was less frequent, you know you'd have those quantities on a more regular basis, instead of having it so scattered. And if we did move to monthly or quarterly, also have kind of a call-in system for that out-of-cycle collection. We know that you're not always gonna hit that week or that month when your collection is, and you really don't want to wait, "Oh, I gotta wait three more months till my quarter comes up." It's gotta be something where the, the citizens can call in, maybe for a nominal fee, to have those guys come out and collect that waste. And then down the line, maybe look at that routing optimization. I think, as things have been going right now, the guys are kind of, you know, getting, getting their feet under them, and, and their time's getting reduced, so that might not be on the front burner at the moment, but a route optimization down the line could be, could be a useful tool for the city as well. I think that brings me to the end. I tried to keep it quick. I know not everyone likes talking trash, like me. Any questions?
Are you? Do you do this for a lot of other cities?
Yes, yeah, uh, yeah, we've been, now I'm at PSC, we've been doing solid waste consulting since 1989, and I've been doing it for a better part of, you know, 13 years now.
So, where would you rank us as far as being liberal about our policies for picking up trash? I mean, I think we're-
You have one of the most generous systems around, for sure.
Okay.
Yeah, you definitely have a very high level of service, and I know that is one of those kind of tough hurdles for people to get over.
since 1989, and I've been doing it for a better part of, you know, 13 years now.
So where would you rank us as far as being liberal about our policies for picking up trash? I mean, I think we're-
You have one of the most generous systems around, for sure.
Okay.
Yeah, you definitely have a very high level of service, and I know that is one of those kind of tough hurdles for people to get over, is yo, you're taking, you're going to take something away from me that I've had forever. And that's kind of where we need some of those options to have a call-in or get more carts so that they can still get that level of service. It just makes it easier on the city staff to complete their jobs in a timely manner, so they're not out there en route 10 hours a day, you know.
Well, one thing, yesterday, they came around and picked up my recycling bin, and I was home when they happened to come by. And I noticed, I was surprised, they were getting out and bringing the recycle bin around to the back of the truck and putting it in the loader there and then dumping it. And I thought everybody was just reaching out to, from the curb.
Right now, that's just the solid, the garbage collection trucks. They've got eight of those, I think at least eight of the automated side loaders. And for recycling, since it's a lower volume and there's less stops, they do have that, the tailgate tipper.
Okay.
Yeah. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you for your presentation and also for reinforcing that our recycling numbers have increased.
Oh, that's great. It's a very strong number.
In terms of, you know, basically ensuring that citizens are using the two receptacles that we've provided. So if we restrict it as such, how do other cities manage those issues if someone has trash or debris or whatever that is outside of either one of those bins? What do other cities do? Is it left there indefinitely? I know you mentioned calling a code enforcement officer. Is that an option? Are they citing the citizen? How do they manage that?
Most of the time, like I said, it's usually a flexible kind of stepped process. The first couple of instances of having extra trash, they might leave a sticker on the trashcan or put a hang tag on the door. Some cities even have fancy GPS where they can geotag it in the truck, and then they get a call from the division. But, you know, you give them a couple of opportunities, maybe make a house call to visit with them about why it's important. You know, usually people, when they, when they finally, someone reaches out to them in person, that can change their mind a lot when they actually see how it affects their jobs. And then ultimately, yeah, sometimes there are, there can be monetary penalties that some cities choose to do. And a lot of times, that's just kind of a, more of a stick than an actual enforcement. They usually don't collect on those kind of penalties, but those are some of the options. But definitely a phased, kind of easier stepped approach, so it's not just, like I said, the iron fist the first time.
Right.
Because you know it's going to take people time to adapt to change.
Absolutely. Yeah. But they do pick up, you know, during that stepped approach.
Yeah, they'll pick it up.
They'll pick it up.
I'm sorry, yes.
We won't just leave it there.
No, no, you don't leave it there.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Mr. Posey, thank you for your wonderful presentation. And I have some comments or some questions, and Dwayne, you may be more apt to help with these. My first inclination to this is that I'm really confused as to how and why we're doing what we're doing. It appears to me, and maybe I'm wrong, but we all pay a sanitation fee, correct? And that sanitation fee covers the removal of our household refuse twice a week, correct? Our garbage and our recycle.
Once a week.
Or once a week, yeah. Once, one recycle, one, yeah. And that's what it covers, correct?
Yes, sir.
So why are we doing more than what it covers? Because if we are, I want my sprinkler system taken off my water bill. And I'll pay my house water bill, but I don't want to pay my sprinkler system bill. I don't understand the subsidy there and why we would do that, because it can't be cost-effective for us. It can't be efficient for us. And in my understanding, I understand, I don't understand all of this, but I do understand when this whole process was put in, we decided to go, when the council decided to go to the automated systems, efficiency is the only thing that makes that thing work. And we're about as inefficient as you can get if you're having to get out and hand-load things that don't belong in there. To me, that's just not a very efficient way to do it. And I think that's going to drive our costs up eventually. It's going to create more wear and tear on our vehicles. We're going to have to replace them sooner, and the people are going to complain because we're having to up the garbage fee again. And I don't understand that. So I need some, I'll need you to come back with me on, on why we're doing it and how we're going to quit doing it.
Yes, sir.
Okay?
Yes, sir.
Because, and don't anybody say, if we privatized our garbage, which I am not saying we're privatizing garbage, but if we privatized our garbage, they wouldn't do that. Not in a million years would they do that. They would leave it on the curb until you picked it up or until someone complained about it, correct?
Yes, sir.
So why are we doing that? We have to be better. We have to be a more efficient city, because that's what our taxpayers are expecting out of us, is to use their taxpayer dollars efficiently. So let's use them efficiently. When you go to the airlines, you don't get to pay for one bag and put three bags on the airlines. You pay for every bag you put on the airline, right?
That's right.
They don't let you slide, ever. They don't let me slide. If it weighs more than 50 pounds, you pay a fee because it weighs more than 50 pounds, right? So I think we need to come up with some parameters that make us an efficient, don't get me wrong, I think you guys do a bang-up job. If you're able to do what you're doing with these numbers and you're going so far outside the boundaries of where it's supposed to be, you guys are heroes. And you've done a phenomenal job. But I think we owe it to at least look at this from the resident standpoint, because I don't think we should be subsidizing other people's cleanouts just because they can. And I think that's a poor use of taxpayer dollar. And so I would like to see us come back with something that's, that's fair, but it's consistent.
Yes, sir.
And if we get to put those out, I'm taking my sprinkler system off my water bill. That's only fair. Okay? So I applaud what you guys do, Dwayne. I know you do, because if you don't pick it up, it's going to sit there, and then our city looks horrible. And then we have to send code people out, and we have to start finding people, and then they get mad. But we're talking about a very small few taking advantage of the majorities, and I don't think that's appropriate. So I'm counting on you to come back to us, give us some information. I think your presentation was spot-on, sir, and I appreciate you on taking the time to do that. It opens my eyes, it allows me to see the numbers, and I'm very impressed with what you do, but we can, we can do better. And when we do better, then maybe our fees don't go up, and we don't have to go through these things like we did in this budget cycle of having to look at adding a dollar here and a dollar there, you know? So I'm counting on you to come through with that and look forward to the next presentation.
Yes, sir.
Please.
Oh, okay.
No, no, please, please, go ahead.
All right.
Thank you, didn't mean to interrupt you.
No.
All right.
What I see here, first off, let's back up just, I think Mrs. Casia and myself were the only two on the city council back when we changed this system. And in order to increase recycling, we just, we changed the system. Because we were doing recycling on one day, and that we wanted to increase recycling, and you couldn't do the whole city on one day and increase the recycling. So that was our primary purpose, was to increase the recycling at that time. Now, after viewing your presentation, which is excellent tonight, it looks like to me that where the yard services, the companies that go around and take care of the yards, and there are some people here in town that say, well, when you get through with my yard, don't leave the bags here, you haul them off. Well, as you should, they haul them off till they get to an area where they think they can dump them all. So instead of having five or 10 bags in front of Joe's front yard, you have 100 down, or not down the street, but in another area where they've got just a drop-off point. And I think the yard services are taking advantage of us. And the other side, I think the rental landlords are taking advantage of us also, and they're cleaning out these units, they're dumping it all out there. And my idea is, if it's not contained in a bag, we don't pick it up unless they want to pay a fee to pick it up.
If they want to pay, I think we need to structure this so that we still continue to provide the services for our residents, but there's a fee associated with doing business outside the parameters of where we're set up right now. And the people that want to use that fee, we're happy to do it. If they don't want to use that fee, they can do it on their own. I just think we have to come up with a system that's fair and equitable, so that we're using our taxpayer dollars the way they're intended to be used.
Right.
Okay?
I agree.
Thank you all very much.
Okay.
Please, Mr. Wright.
I represent District 5, which has a lot of rural area in it, and we have a lot of problem with people now taking stuff out to dead-end roads and dumping it. So if you, if we start, you know, making, limiting these apartment guys from being able to just drag their stuff out to the street, which I don't like at all, how do we stop them from going to the dead end and dumping all their stuff out there, and then we have to send trucks out to pick that up? Do you have something that you've worked with to-
But David, but understand, wherever they're dumping it is going to be on someone's land. So we don't have to send anybody out. It's still on someone's land that's responsible for it, whether it's theirs or not, right or wrong. And that's what they call game cameras.
You can get to the point where you go actually, where somebody from the, if you've got an accumulation like you're talking about, somebody goes out and looks through it, and there's going to be some mail, there's going to be something that indicates where this comes from. Then you get in touch with that person and say, this is what the procedure is, and this is what it's going to cost you because you've done this. There, you can go through-
But you're right, David, that's going to happen until we start cracking down on the whole, the whole, the whole gamut of this.
I agree.
This has to be a, a complete system that we really implement, and, but once again, fair and equitable. That's all we're asking for. No one's asking for a free ride. We're asking for fair and equitable.
And to answer your question a little bit about illegal dumping, that's always a challenge regardless. It's going to be there. I did work with Collin County, believe it or not, they have a really enormous rural area, you know, part of the county, not just plain-owned McKinney and things, but part of their solution was to, they, I think they established a couple of drop-off points where county residents with their, you know, utility bill or something could come and actually drop off free of charge, I think, once a month, and had roll-off containers. And those, you'd have 100 cars lined up some weekends when we'd be out there. So that's, those are some options, but there are things that can be done. But the unattended cameras and stuff, if you have a particular place that is a hotspot for illegal dumping, you know, those are, those are definitely deterrents or ways to at least get some identification on people.
Thank you guys so much. Great presentations. Any other questions, council? Thank you for the excellent discussion.
Please do the process, change a tank. You know, those trucks with their big lifting on them? You have garbage on both sides.
Right.
All right. The truck goes down, you pick up garbage on one side with the owner.
Yes.
On the other side, you cannot pick up. You go around, you go around, come back, is that waste tank? Have to come back up, same, same route?
If, if things are going the way they should with the automated cans, it's faster to just use the automated tipper arm rather than have the guys have to get out and roll every cart to the truck. So it actually is quicker to do the automated. It also reduces injuries on guys having to lift bags, and it makes things a little cleaner.
I mean, when they lift up, just, just weight.
Right.
You have to go down the street, then have to come back up the other side.
Essentially, they have to do twice the travel.
Right.
Yes.
And then waste tank?
In the end, it's actually a quicker process the way it's set up now.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate you.
Okay, time for our public safety update. Tonight, Chief Bishop will not be here. He's out today with, with family issues, and we wish him all the best and his wife speedy recovery. Chief Steelman, what you got for us?
Mayor Mack, Council Mr. Willard, thanks for the opportunity to get in front of you again tonight. Got just three items I really want to hit on tonight, and naturally, you can already expect what the first one's going to be, if I can get it to advance.
Yeah.
Time is running out. We have this council meeting, I believe, and at least one in December, and this program, the sign-up period for this program will end on December the 31st. And you would be amazed at how many people come in the first or second week of January wanting to sign up, and now they've got to wait until after December, I'm sorry, October the 1st. So please, if you're interested or curious about it, call 237-1232 and ask about our EMS subscription program. I wanted to report back with October having wrapped up our Fire Prevention Month, and naturally, I told you when I reported last time that we were bummed about having to cancel our block party. We did get a lot of good participation and activity across the month of October in our schools and in our fire stations. Just a, just an awesome job by all the guys and girls out there in the field to interact with all the different school-aged children to get the fire safety message out there. And just some rough numbers, station tours, we did roughly seven of those, truck demos, 22, puppet shows, six. And out of all of the, all of the combination of all that, we were able to get our fire safety message out to roughly 2,000 people, most of them the young people in our community that really need to hear it. So again, I appreciate the work that the men and women of the department did to get that word out. And lastly, our, our department, our city is actually hosting, whether you knew this or not, the 32nd Annual East Texas Arson Investigators Conference. We've hosted this, again, like I said, for 32 years. So since Wednesday, we've had roughly 150 arson investigators from as far away from the DFW area, from, from the Houston area, that have converged in Longview to learn the tricks of their trade of investigating fires. So here's a classroom shot out at Maud Cobb. And then today, they did some burn demonstrations where they set some mock-ups up and actually burned them to have to go in and practice some of their investigative techniques of reconstructing the fire and getting down to the root, the origin and cause of the fire. So again, having people in from out of town, hopefully, you know, they're staying in our hotels, they're eating in our restaurants, they're buying our gas, so hopefully it's helping out the economy a little bit. And that's all I have. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Chief Steelman, always looking forward to your presentation. I'm not sure I enjoy you more, you or Ms. Choi. Y'all are both so pleasant when you come up. And we will have a public safety update at the next meeting from Chief Bishop. Okay, consent agenda. Are there any items that the council would like to pull off for separate discussion?
No dipper.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Zoning. We have a public hearing to consider application PD 15-14. Ms. Choi?
Thank you, Mayor Mack, members of council, and Mr. Willard. The applicant is requesting to amend PD 1508 to plan development general retail to allow for a four-story hotel. As you recall, this has come before council in August. The plan development site plan has changed significantly. The developer has switched hotel brands, therefore the site layout has changed quite a bit. Therefore, it does need to come back before Planning and Zoning Commission and City Council. The plan development proposes a four-story hotel with approximately 58,000 square feet with 157 parking spaces and a monument sign that's located right here, you can barely see it, not to exceed 150 square feet in size. Hawkins Parkway is a minor arterial road, which is appropriate for this type of use. Planning and Zoning Commission and staff recommend approval of this request. I would be happy to answer any questions at this time.
Which is now open? Are there any speakers? Council, any questions? Public hearing is now closed.
No dipper.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Choi. Thank you Ms. Choi. Action items, we're considering ordinance authorizing the issuance of and sale of City of Longview Texas General Obligation Refunding Bonds Series 2015 and approving all matters indicated thereto. Mr. Martin, Hilltop Securities, welcome sir.
Thank you Mayor, council, staff, John Martin, Hilltop Securities. With me tonight is my partner Joey Durker. This evening we are showing you the potential savings opportunity through refinancing and we've left at your places there, a quick little outline of what's being proposed. There are three outstanding issues that we have been looking at, the 2004, 2005 and 2007 general obligation bonds. These are eligible for redemption, two of which, the first two are callable now, in other words, we can redeem them right this second. There's eight and a half million of the 07s that are callable here in about a year and a half, June 1, 2017. So we can do an advance refunding of that where we take the proceeds of these bonds and we put them in escrow to pay those bonds on June 1 17 and we still end up saving money. So those refunding candidates have a combined interest rate, not bad, 4.43 percent, that's not a bad borrowing rate, but however, interest rates are so low right now and hope to continue to be over the next few weeks while we, before we get to market, that were projected based on today's conditions, that the cost of funds would go from 4.43 to 1.76 percent and could reduce the debt service on those general obligation bonds by just under $500,000. So some pretty decent savings. The parameter part of the sale is that you're giving us the go ahead to move forward so long as this meets, so long as we meet certain thresholds and conditions at the time we go to market and those are outlined there, that the aggregate principal amount of bonds really can't exceed 10, 10.2 million dollars. We must produce at least a net present value savings of 4 percent. The true interest cost must not exceed 2.75 percent. And then we're not gonna extend any of the maturity. So this is just a straight debt service savings, you're just reducing your payment, we're not extending debt, shortening debt. And the sideways page here shows you how that works. Pardon me, your existing debt service payments on the left side, what's, what payments are coming out and then the new refunding bonds that we're estimating and projecting there with the new debt service and so you can see the annual reduction thereof in the neighborhood of $70,000 a year. So not bad. So the, we show you there some various footnotes of exactly what's going on here. There is a, then the bond buyers index behind it to kinda show you a trend of interest rates, a cute little graph that Joey does for us behind that, shows you it's, while interest rates have been kinda inching up a little bit, it's still a really good time to borrow money. So on the average, it's, it's well below that. The calendar of events is there showing you when we plan to move forward with this. We've scheduled our rating calls with S&amp;P and Fitch to take place next week. So we're at the bold type there of November 12th where we're establishing the parameters and presenting that bond ordinance that is a subject to ordinance really. And then we intend to go out here the first week of December into the marketplace and we'll hope that interest rates hold true for us. That's really my presentation, could I answer any questions for anybody?
Mr. Moore?
First, I wanna commend you and your predecessor for looking at the, at the city's debt picture and getting savings whenever we can. Question, who is, who's gonna be running the books? Who's the underwriting team?
Well, Raymond James, and there's, there's two firms, Raymond James and BOSC, Bank of Texas has a underwriting arm, BOSC, so they have shown a great deal of interest in, in the city and have communicated with Angela on a number of occasions their interest here and they do a fine job.
I, I would encourage your underwriters to try to place as many of these bonds locally as possible. I know that doesn't always take place, but I would encourage them to try.
And the interest rates are too low for us to be purchasing.
That's right.
For every buyer, there's a seller. And anyway, I think this is an excellent, excellent opportunity.
One other, just, just one other, my question, okay, you've got the 8,500,000 that's callable in 2017, will you be issuing the bonds now to cover that call or do you have to wait to 2017 before you issue the bonds for that call?
Well, the, the way this works is when the, when these bonds settle here a few days before Christmas on December 22nd, the proceeds will go into an escrow account. There's then three pieces to that, that will, there's redemption of those bonds that are currently callable that'll happen in January, so the originally, the bond, those bond holders will get noticed. Those ones that aren't callable till 2017, they sit in that escrow and will earn a little bit of interest on that as much as we can over that, you know, 18 month period, it won't be, it'll be a de minimis amount.
But that, that way you'll be able to take advantage of the low interest rates at this time.
Right, and they are considered for your bookkeeping purposes and for your audit purposes as de fees, which is a term of art in the accounting community that means paid for, but provide payment for.
Pre-refunded.
Right, so because there's an escrow there, the, the set off there, it takes that, it takes those, that principal amount off the books.
I'm gonna ask one other little question here, with the economy slowing down a little bit and sales tax revenue going down a little bit, do you see this affecting in any way our bond rating with S&amp;P and the other agencies?
Well, I, I think I will be a little more concerned to see that discussion here in the spring when we add money, when we talk about the remaining authorization for the street bonds that you all are intending to do here in the spring sometime, April, May or whenever, June, I don't know. So when we have that discussion, we're gonna be adding 8 million dollars of debt. This is a refunding, so this is all, this is all, we're saving money here, we're not adding.
Okay, thank you. And we still looking at December 1st for pricing?
Yeah, December 2nd I think or so.
Mr. Martin, we appreciate your presentation, Mr. Durker, thank you as well and do not stand up. That guy's nine feet tall, I'm not kidding you. We stood up a minute ago, shaking his hand and I'm like looking up and I, I don't stand up, you stay put. Okay, we need a motion on this ordinance please?
Mayor, I move to adopt the ordinance as presented.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Very well. And once again, this is one of those things that, that sometimes we don't all take into account, but this is saving us approximately $500,000 for our community. You all realize that's one cent on our tax rate. So that's a big savings and we appreciate that, we appreciate people looking out for us and making these things available to us because it's, it helps, every little bit helps. We appreciate you guys very much, thank you. Okay, we're to items of community interest. Mr. Moore?
First thing, I'd just like to invite everybody to my very first District 1 Town Hall meeting on Tuesday, December 8th at 7 o'clock in the Pine Tree Community Center. I'm looking forward to this opportunity to visit with the folks in, in West Longview. Second, given that yesterday was Veterans Day, I'd like to take this opportunity to, to thank all veterans, active duty personnel for your service defending this great country of ours. I would also like to thank the families of these men and women for giving their support to these folks. When I was gone, my wife wrote me a letter every day and I can't begin to tell you how important that was to me for the year that I was gone. And finally, to my fellow Vietnam veterans, I'd like to offer you something that many of you did not receive when you returned, welcome home.
Thank you sir. Thank you sir. Ms. Snoddy?
I would just like to reiterate what Mr. Moore just said, let's be mindful of our veterans, let's make sure we show them our gratitude and if you haven't purchased your green light, please go ahead and do so. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Williams?
Wanna congratulate Longview Ballet on a very successful fundraiser, they're always very successful, held at our train depot and I'm excited and Ms. Hill, I want you to know, I'm looking forward to seeing what that contract is going to look like to allow our citizens to continue to utilize such a, such a great facility. Also wanna acknowledge Partners in Prevention, what a wonderful community discussion with youth serving organizations this past week. As you all are aware, we are moving forward with our community mobilization efforts, what better place to start than not only with our police department, but also with our own partners in prevention. So good job there. Also, my town hall is Monday, councilman, and want to just invite everyone to join us at Rotten Recreation Center at 6:00 PM, there's a slide, yay, and I'm looking forward to having an opportunity to have discussions with the citizens, thank you.
Ms. Ishihara?
I don't have anything.
Mr. Wright?
Don't forget for all you runners, I believe it's November 21st, the Newgate Gobble Wobble, come out and run a 5K, Rawlin', I bet you can come out there and do that. And I would like to introduce my mom, she's visiting us from Massachusetts this week and she's here in the audience checking out the city council.
Welcome, we're glad you're here. Mr. Allen?
Very brief, I wanna say thank you to the veterans and also wanna say thank you for the Longview newspaper, the excellent front page on Veterans Day, they ran highlighting the World War II veterans that are still with us in this area, I wanna say thank you, that was a wonderful front page edition, thank you.
Mr. Willard?
Thank you Mayor and council, I wanted to also, just to tie the loose end up on the bond refunding, to recognize Angela Cohen, our finance director and her capable staff and they do a wonderful job as you all know and she looks for every opportunity to save money, I promise you, and, and they just do a wonderful job. Angela, thank you for your work too.
Another fine department in this city. Residents, just so you all know, this is our only meeting for the month of November, as typical, we just have one meeting in November, one meeting in December, so just to make sure everybody understands that. Longview Green and Clean is this weekend at Lear Park. Recyclables can be dropped off between 8:00 AM and noon, for more information, go to the city website or Channel 5. The Longview Parks Recreation invite you to a free event to walk the park, a progressive walk through some of the land being prepared to become the Longview Arboretum, Sunday, November 15th, 3:00 PM to 5:00 PM, meet in the parking lot of Maucab Activity Complex. Holidays are fast approaching, we want to let you know, the City of Longview office will be closed for Thanksgiving holiday on Thursday and Friday, November 26th and 27th. Residential trash, no collection Thanksgiving Day, Thursday, November 26th, Thursday's trash and recycling collection will be moved to Friday, November 27th. Longview Christmas Parade, deadline for entry is Monday, November 20th, the parade is Thursday, December 3rd at 6:30 in beautiful downtown Longview. Okay, survey time. I have some preparatory remarks before I tell you the survey. I wanna, I want you to understand, 'cause I didn't really get all this, but this is very important. Do you all realize where our sales tax comes from? 'Cause I was pretty one dimensional on this. It's, it's a lot, it comes from accommodations and food, from agricultural, mining, manufacturing, miscellaneous, from retail, from service including utilities, construction, transportation, healthcare and from wholesalers. I didn't realize all of those things go into our sales tax revenues. Now here's what's really interesting. Do you realize the biggest change in our sales tax revenue by sectors, and we've reported for the last, what, nine months, we've had declining in our sales tax revenues? And when I hear that term, I think people aren't out shopping, I mean, what's the problem? That's really not the problem actually. Do you realize our agricultural, mining and manufacturing is down 1.3 million dollars in fiscal year 2014, 2015? And that's basically because the oil and gas revenues are down and we cannot control that, we don't control the oil and gas revenues, we're, we're at the mercy of that entity. Our service is down by 128,000 dollars. Here's where it gets interesting, our accommodations and food is up by 272,000 dollars and our retail is up by 200,000 dollars, which I consider is fantastic because those are things we can actually control, not control, but those are choices that we're making where and when to spend our money. We can't control the oil and gas, but it's really encouraging to me that we, we have seen more development, more retail, more restaurants and you know what, we're using those things. So that's good for the developers, it's good for the citizens and it's really good for the City of Longview. So that being said, here's the survey question. If you had to guess, what would you estimate the daily labor population to be in Longview? In other words, our labor market commute? Your choices are 86,000, 327,000, 673,000 or 782,000? The winner, at 56 percent, 86,000. It couldn't be further from the truth. Our actual labor market commute area in Longview is 673,000 people, which blows my mind. Did you all know that? I didn't, I'm shocked. But you know what, what that tells you is people are coming to Longview, they don't all live here, but they're coming to work, they're coming to shop, they're coming to eat, they're coming to spend their money and then they go home wherever they live. So what's that's telling us is we have an incredible opportunity to take advantage of that and we should as a community. So that's gonna bring me to something in just a minute. Second question, when you shop outside of Longview, where do you typically shop? Catalog, online or another city? 67 percent, online. 32 percent, another city. My, only place I shop's catalog, 1 percent. I guess I was the one that voted for that. It's called Cabela's catalog, that's where I shop, I don't shop anywhere else. Okay, so what's that telling us? This is one of those surveys that I think is very educational and I think we need to understand the concept behind it. So when we do shop outside of Longview, we're usually doing it online. Why? Because we usually get a cheaper price or it's more convenient. So I understand those two, but what I'm, what I'm trying to get us back to is we can control our sales tax revenues if we start spending more of our money shopping local and we talked about it last time, I'm gonna wear this out because I think this is a place where we can make a difference and if we'll become conscious about it and we're going to have a conscious effort in this to try our very best to get people to shop local, to spend their money here when they can, because in the long run, even though you think you're saving money by shopping online or in another city or in a catalog, if we will shop local and we increase our sales tax revenues, that comes back to us as residents because of the savings that we get in our tax dollars, the way we're able to spend our money. And so we're going to have an active campaign on this, I'm gonna really push this hard because I think especially as the holidays are coming up, as we start to shop for winter clothing, as businesses start to shop for their Christmas gifts that they give to their clients, these are things that we can do that make a difference in Longview and I wanna see us do that. And I'm gonna challenge us next month to make this a reality. So be prepared for that, thank you for the survey, I mean, it was a great response this week. It was, it was very enlightening to me and I hope this is enlightening to you because these are numbers that we can utilize to really shape what we're doing, you know, we can't control certain things, but we can control other things. So shop, shop local in Longview. Okay, book club, do we have a video tonight? Excellent. Who's in the video tonight? Trick question. This past week I've been focusing on being a better receiver. Page 107 says, "Every giving can happen only because it is also a receiving." How true. There are so many wonderful people in my life that give to me more than I could ever repay them, they give of themselves out of their abundance in blessings. Shouldn't we all be that way? If we focus on how we can give to others, it is bound to come back to us as well. So let's be all in and be go givers. Another great Monday night with the citizens who participate in the book club, the response continues to grow every, every Monday and it's just, it's really humbling to see participation like that on something that I never thought would ever be where it is. And it saddens me that this is the last book club discussion for this book, but I'm, I'm very encouraged by where we've come, by what we're doing and how we're doing it. And, and know that there will be another book club, starting in January, we'll, the book has, I'm, I'm deciding now, it's close, but we'll have another discussion in January because I feel like this engagement is good, I think it's healthy. I see no negative to this and I only see positives. So participation's been fantastic, you know, this is one of those ones, it's been very difficult for me, this, this law is, I'm glad it's the last one because it's the hardest one for me, the, the receiving part, but you know, it's like everything else, you have to be a good receiver in order to be a good giver. And we need to, we need to realize that when we are receiving, we're accommodating someone else who's doing the giving. And, and one of my really, really close friends has told me this many times, when he's tried to do things for me and I, I try not to accept it and he tells me this one line, he says, "Please don't steal my joy." His joy is giving and I need to be joyful in receiving it so that his joy is carried through. And it's, it's a hard one because we try to think of ourselves as being unselfish, but really we're being selfish when we fail to allow someone else to put it out there as they want to. And so this is, this is a tough one, but it's a really important one and I've had a lot of really in-depth discussion this week with people about this one and I appreciate that. I don't know how you all have done, but it's been, it's been a good one for me. Any comments?
Yeah, this was a tough couple of chapters, but also on page 107, you know, receiving is the natural result of giving, I mean, that's how the system has to work, you know, as I mentioned, for every buyer, there's gotta be a seller and so we've been talking about giving and, and looking out for the other person and, you know, over and over and over again, but somebody's gotta be on the receiving end of that. And he even went on to say that, what gives you the right to refuse it, to deny their right to give? So I think this is a very fitting closing to the book.
I think they, they planned it that way because it, it does, it does, it does wrap things up and it's, it's been a, it's been a great journey for me, I appreciate all of y'all's participation, I appreciate the city staff's participation on Monday nights, y'all have been fantastic, I love when your name pops up, I love seeing the citizens' names out there, some that I see every week and some that are new each week and it's just, it's really, really encouraging to see that, you know, we can all meet on different levels and do something together because this is something every one of us are capable of doing, we can all get this book, we can read it, we can enjoy it, we can interact with each other and it's been very positive. And, and I think that's the, if, if the one thing I've gotten out of this is that... And, and I think that's the, if, if the one thing I've gotten out of this is that, once again, positivity will spur positivity and that's where we're going to continue to go. And I appreciate that and I thank all of you all that have participated. I, I, I want to thank Julie back there for initiating this with this book and, and getting me to read it when I, I didn't want to, um, but I appreciate she, her doing that and, and the way this has progressed and I hope the next one will be just as successful as this one. I think it will be because it's a, it's going to be a lot of fun. So, thank you all. I appreciate you and I appreciate your indulgence and City of Longview, thank you all for participating. So, okay, anything else? We will now go into executive, executive session to deliberate, uh, regarding real property under Texas Government Code, section 551.072, to consider the value and purchase of property for Hotel Convention Center. And we will not reconvene, but before we adjourn, please let me say this. I want to thank you all for being here. We have consistently since May had relatively full, if not over full, council chambers at every single meeting. And you know what? That means you're engaged and we appreciate that. Okay, I said, you know what? I'm sorry, my wife keeps saying, I say, you know what too much. So, when I do, she's pointing her finger at me. Thank you all for being here and engaging us because it's encouraging for us to see you out there and we're okay when you have a complaint with us. We're even more okay when you come and you don't have a complaint. That means you're coming, no, that means you're coming because you want to be here, not because you need to be here. And that says a lot for our community and it's been, it's been encouraging. I hope this continues throughout as long as we're up here. So thank you for being here. Thank you for your participation and we will now adjourn this meeting.